Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Sorry, we are just a minute late. The Wilmington School Committee, we're returning from an executive session pursuant to MGL thirty A S twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Nurse, substitute rate adjustment, and contract negotiation updates. And so now we are back in our regular session. This evening, we have some guests with us, so we are going to, in place of our normal pledge of allegiance, we're going to welcome the Wilmington High School Orchestra to perform the National Anthem, so if you could, please rise, and when you guys are ready, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you. Very nicely done. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, our next item is the student representative report from Wilmington Middle School, Emily Falk and Olivia Howie. When you guys are ready, come on up. Good evening, thank you for being here.
My name's Emily Falk.
My name's Olivia Howie.
We are here to talk about the clubs and activities at Wilmington Middle School for the month of December. Paw Print Magazine. Here at Paw Print Literacy Magazine, club members create pieces of art and literature. They construct short stories, articles, newspapers, drawings, memoirs, and other pieces of artwork. They just finished issue twenty-eight titled Twirling into Winter. Not only do they submit their own artwork, but they accept submissions from the whole school. You can find these submissions on the website. Their next topic is issue twenty-nine. It will include the next topic for their submissions. Band. It has been a very busy month for the band. There was a seventh through twelfth grade band concert featuring middle school and high school bands along with the honors jazz band. On December seventeenth, the fifth and sixth grade bands had their winter concert. This year was the high school marching band's first time attending the Merrimack Santa Parade. Math team. The math team just had their last meet on November twentieth and finished on December fourth. The team earned a score of seventy-seven and did amazing. Their coach, Miss O'Leary, is proud of their teamwork, and they are practicing for their upcoming meet on January fifteenth. The team is practicing the Pythagorean theorem right now, and Jimmy is their team captain. Student council. Student council had finished the second-floor bulletin board with turkeys and its stinkful feathers that were made in advisory in November. Today, each advisory class made door decorating for the winter. Students went all out this year. The Grinch paid a visit to many classrooms, and there was even a dunking Grinch playing basketball. There were snow globes, selfie booths, and a reindeer stable. The judges were hungry from all the ginger houses. Mr. Kyra even made a guest appearance as Harry from Home Alone on one of the doors. What a winter wonderland. This has been an ongoing tradition here at WMS, and students are thrilled that this year's theme takes place in the wintertime. The doors look amazing, and both staff and students doned their ugly holiday sweaters for the equation. This week, student council is working on the first-floor bulletin board. The bulletin board includes an igloo, a bear family with different costumes, with different costumes on. We continue to meet weekly and plan upcoming events for the new year. After-school sports. After-school sports have been a blast this year. The most popular games are ultimate football and basketball. They have it after school on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, one for each grade. It's lots of fun. Art club. Art club is a very fun club here at WMS. Members have made it, members have made a variety of crafts, including Christmas ornaments and ceramics. They just finished up a mural that has a lot of time and effort put into it. They can't wait for the upcoming events and creative ideas in store for this year. PE events. A few weeks ago, all three students participated in a night job ball tournament with students against staff. It's a very fun, exciting, and competitive event that both participants and the audience enjoyed. We're excited for more PE events to come.
Um, Project Three Fifty-One, the food drive has just ended for the Wilmington Food Pantry. One thousand four hundred and twenty-three food items were collected. On January fifth, the launch day for our Ambassador of Wilmington of two thousand and twenty-five, Eliana Goldstein. This is a time where she will start her community service. Performing arts. This year, the WMS Drama Club is proud to present their winter production of Descendants the Musical. The performance will be on January thirtieth and thirty-first at six-thirty P. M. and February first at four o'clock P. M. at the Wilmington High School Auditorium. This show is family-friendly and will run for about one and a half hours. We are hoping for another sold-out show, so buy your tickets now at WPSK twelve dot ludus dot com. Chorus. The sixth and seventh-grade chorus classes had their concert on December third in the WMS Auditorium. The eighth-grade chorus will be performing alongside the high school choral group on January ninth at the Wilmington High School Auditorium. Finally, the eighth-grade chorus will also have an opportunity to sing at the Providence Bruins game on January eighteenth. Robotics team. Next robotics team is getting ready for their competition on January twenty-fifth. They're trying to put together their two robots, Apollo and Artemis, for the competition. They have the mechanical team working on putting it all together. They have the three-D team printing out all the parts of the robot. Finally, they have to program the robot so they will be able to crush this competition. Thank you to our amazing pack. Our sixth graders had the opportunity to attend a two-person performance of A Christmas Carol, and it was truly a memorable experience. The talented actors brought the classic story to life in a dynamic and engaging way, captured the attention of both the students and the teachers alike. With their impressive ability to switch between characters and seamlessly transition through the scenes, and performers made the magic of Dickens' timeless tale come to life. The students were captivated by the energy and creativity of the show, and it was sparked plenty of discussions and excitement afterward. It was a fantastic performance. Thank you, WMS pack. Best buddies. The Festival of Little Trees was a fantastic opportunity to come together as a community, and we are so grateful to be a part of it. This event is a heartwarming celebration, and we are proud to set up our very own tree, showcasing the spirit of friendship, inclusion, and community at Best Buddies and Bodies. Our tree was a true labor of love decorated with care and creativity by our club members, and we couldn't have done it without a generous donation from our supporters. A huge thank you goes out to everyone who contributed. Our support not only made our tree possible, but it also helped continue the mission to create lasting friendships. We look forward to continuing to spread joy and friendship throughout the year. World Culture Club. The World Culture Club meets once or twice a month on Tuesday in Miss De Stefano's room. They have five different events already. They've met to explore Hispanic heritage, both Mexico and Puerto Rico, and they celebrated Italian Heritage Month with both featuring guest speakers from the community. They also explored India and France, and then in January, they will get to celebrate Chihuahua and Lunar Chinese New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to say, I read the literary magazine you were talking about, Paw Prints, right?
Yeah.
It was great. It was really good. There were some really funny drawings, really good drawings, and a lot of great writing in there, so I just wanted to say thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great rest of the night. Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. First up, we have approval of minutes from November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion? Dr. McCauley, second by Mr. Samaha, discussion, all those in favor. That is unanimous. We have approval or acceptance of a grant from WEF, miscellaneous grant in the amount of three thousand dollars for the STEM Fair. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, second, Mr. Golden, all those in favor. That is also unanimous. Thank you, as always, to WEF. We appreciate it. Next, we have approval, second read of policies, AC, non-discrimination and harassment, as well as the suggested removal of policy ACA, ACAAB, ACAAB dash R, and AC dash R. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, second. Dr. McCauley, all those in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. We have warrants, grants seventeen through twenty revolving thirty through thirty-three, local forty-nine through fifty-six, food service twenty-eight through thirty-three, circuit breaker eleven through thirteen, special education twenty-three through thirty-one, and payroll eleven-twenty twenty-four, twelve-four twenty-twenty-four, and twelve-eighteen twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, second, Mr. Samaha, all those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, uh, we're going to take things a little out of order, and I'm going to move the superintendent's report to where new business is, and I'm going to move new business to where the superintendent's report is, if that's okay with the committee, because we have some guests here and we don't want to keep them here all night. Okay, that said, our first item of new business is the FY twenty-six preliminary budget presentation. Dr. Brand, Mr. Rogero, you are up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Sorry.
Oh, even out of order in that section.
We're going to take it out of order, yeah.
Included in, uh, in the packet for this item is both a, a two-page memo that outlines some of the highlights and then the presentation slide deck that I'm going to go through now. But first, I'll, I'll start by saying, and to extend my, my thanks, we, we title this the, or entitled this the superintendent's budget as part of this budget process that moves towards you as a school committee, the governing body, but really, um, it, it is the, uh, it is the hallmark and work of a whole lot of folks that are both at this table and as well tonight, many who are here in the room with us, and I want to take this opportunity to extend my thanks and to highlight their contributions. Our school principals are here, our other members of our central office leadership team, Lauren from the budget office, and there's other folks as well who serve in a leadership role throughout the district and who help make this process possible, and so to extend to them my thanks as we, as we get started. This is, um, uh, this is right in line with where we typically are at this time of the year with presenting to you a first pass of the budget, and so we, we adopt the word preliminary. Next year is fiscal year twenty-six. We'll start to use that identifier a lot going forward, but obviously, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six is what we're building this budget for. Um, and there's a lot of information to come here, and certainly, if it's all right with the committee, I'd like to be able to work through the slides and then open it up to questions, some of which my colleagues around the table might be able to respond to, but certainly some who are in the audience here tonight, but more specifically, I think that that's important for you. Presentation that comes includes a number of topics or subtopics, budget guidelines and drivers we'll start with in a moment. We'll, we'll shift to enrollment overview, talk a little bit more deeply around student needs and programmatic needs, because that is, that is one of the centerpieces of this budget proposal, give you a sense of the budget request highlights as well as capital requests. So first off, starting with the guidelines and the term that I use anyway, budget drivers, those things that, um, when you start to break apart the budget, what's, what's leading to changes, and usually that is in an upward direction for the budget plan that's before you. So first off, the guidelines, which remain relatively the same from year to year, and I think center, centered around what they should be for any thoughtful budget plan that's put forward for, for the support of a school district's operations. Funding for services and programs that are deemed essential to WPS students within the least restrictive environment. On the one hand, that goes without saying, we want to make sure that we have appropriate levels of staffing in our classrooms, but as you know well, we have a whole host of other students with a variety of needs that we have worked very hard at in the district over the good number of years to provide, uh, in district enroll, sorry, in, in, in district programming to the greatest extent we can. Uh, of course, behind the work that we do is ongoing as it relates to, uh, the subjects and the disciplines that we are delivering as part of our curricular program, and so included in this budget is a variety of things that help support that, whether it be professional development, whether it be the purchase and acquisitions of materials and, and supplies and the like. And of course, with all of that, we have contractual responsibilities for a number of bargaining units, and we, um, uh, we do our best to project what our, our enrollment needs are going forward for next year. Budget drivers specifically, as we think about fiscal year twenty-six, not necessarily in any particular order, but they're outlined here. A significant spike that this budget is contending with is out-of-district transportation costs for special education students. I think members of the committee and hopefully some of our community know, we, we provide transportation for our students that are educated here in district. We provide transportation for as well students who may be receiving services out of district, and that's an obligation that we have to them and their families, and that is facing a, we're facing a significant cost that we can talk a little bit more about later, if you'd like. Out-of-district tuition costs, uh, there is a, uh, there's a fairly sizable increase in that, uh, that has, has driven up this first pass of the budget. Contractual obligations, no different from one year to the next, but when you're rolling over and, and seeking to retain the amount of staff that we're talking about in our operation, which, as you'll see a little bit later, is close to five hundred full and part-time staff, that obviously has implications on the bottom line, and then next year is no different. Um, and as I mentioned at the outset, we are building, and we'll talk a little bit more about the expansion of services for some of our more intensive special education students, and additional resources as well for English language education, an area of our student population that continues to expand, and you'll see that in a little bit of a mo, a moment. Building any budget, we start with enrollment. Uh, we, we are a people business, I say that all the time, and that's of course the case. Roughly, approximately eighty percent of this budget centers around provisions of fiscal resources to support the people that we ask to come to work to, uh, in the district each and every day. But we start with enrollment, because obviously the people that we have are working directly with the young people of Wilmington, and so that's where we start our focus. As has been the case in previous years, there's a couple of slides here in the interest of time, and by eyesight, not being able to read all of those, there's a lot of data here, but for those that are digging into this, what I think is important to highlight is the, the methodology that we take and the, the approach that's taken in terms, in terms of trying to calculate and forecast what student enrollment is anticipated to be next year. Paul does a terrific job tracking this data. This is the historic data in case people are interested in taking a look back in time, but it's also the data that we use, which is called the three-year cohort survival model. That's a methodology that's not just used here in this district, but I know others where I've worked as well, too. And, um, uh, maybe not exactly a science, but a mathematical approach to take stock of what's our retention rate from one year to the next by grade level and across the district, and then with that retention rate, that's used to apply that as a forward-looking lens to how many students we anticipate there will be for, in this case, fiscal year twenty-six. It goes a little bit beyond that, as you can see, for the other outlining years. So a lot of, a lot of data there, but certainly important, as that's what we build as a foundation off of. Enrollment as of October first, October the first is, as many of the committee members are aware, but just for those that may be, um, watching at home and interested, this is an important date, we identify this. This is the official capture of enrollment data across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for public schools, uh, and October first is the date the Department of Education uses to capture data from all districts, and it's this data that's reflected on the district website, oh, sorry, on the Department of Education's website. And so that's why sometimes there can be variations over time. We could, we could lose some students, we could gain some students, but that, if that happens all after October first, we, we, we point back to October first to sort of that baseline marker, a place in the sand, if you will, for which our enrollment is. This provides an overview of that by school and by grade level, and as reported as of October first, you can see our overall enrollment of twenty-eight hundred and eighteen students district-wide. This was a, a graphic or a, or a table that was used last year, maybe for the first time, I can't recall, but, um, anyway, just to breaks it down by grade level band in terms of what are we looking at for enrollment, and how do we compare from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five? So this is a look back in comparison from last year to this year. Um, and at pre-K to grade five, we were up eight students. Grade six to eight at the middle school, between last year and this year, down eighteen students, but at the high school, up thirteen students. Total enrollment change from last fiscal year to this year, up three students. A few sprinkled in here, and thank you to Tracy for her work reminding us of the fact that this is not all about numbers, and it's not all about facts and figures, but it is about kids and programs that we serve. Talk a little bit about student programs and specialized program needs. If this looks familiar, that's because it is. We use something, uh, we used the same table last year, and we did so at a little bit more length to talk about one segment of our population that continues to grow, and we continue to track and watch carefully, and that is the subset of our students that, um, are within our English language acquisition programs and English language instruction. It's first important to note that, like a lot of other programs, we have a legal obligation to provide appropriate services and instruction for students that are learning English. There's a lot of numbers on here, I won't go through each and every line, but what this provides you with is a historical view back to twenty nineteen or twenty, to twenty-twenty, so fiscal year twenty. The number of Wilmington Public School students with a home language other than or in addition to English, there were ninety-three students in twenty-nine, nineteen, twenty, twenty, and that compares to one hundred and sixty-seven students in this current fiscal year, an increase of just shy of six percent. You can see some other categories there, Wilmington's active English learners and students who are former English learners. But we profiled this last year really, uh, as part and parcel with one segment of our population that's growing and expanding, like a lot of other communities, but also because of the fact that it's given rise for us to need to focus our attention and our fiscal resources on expanding staff in that very area. Some may be surprised at this, some maybe not, but the array of languages spoken by students and families across the district is broad. Thank you to Ms. Billings, who put this together and provided an update for, for this and for this presentation. This is a range of languages spoken by a hundred and sixty-seven Wilmington Public School students and their respective families. The highlights are those families that have requested translation, and one that was, was noted, and thank you to Mr. Turner, who pointed that out, we have requests through some of the budgetary process that Hindu, I think we need to add to, and update on the list for recent translations. So, um, this is an important area of our, uh, of our focus and service provision, because we want to do right by students, and that includes all of our students, and we want to make sure that we have the appropriate resources in place. It is that, because of that, that we, uh, we took a look at our numbers and we added a full-time, the equivalent of a full-time teacher since the beginning of this school year, we realized that we were, uh, we didn't have sufficient staffing in place. Shifting to sub-separate programming for a moment, we've talked at length about this over the years, but I, I just want to bring some attention back to that, because this is also one of the areas that this budget proposal before you is including, and on a couple of different levels. This is a, um, this is a new slide, a new table that, um, provides context for the committee and for our leadership team and for, really for our community. We've talked an awful lot over the time that this conversation started before my time in the district almost seven years ago, but it has continued, and that is working hard to provide appropriate in-service, in-district programs for students that have more intensive special education needs. This is, uh, the heart of the conversation around trying to keep students in district, that's better for students where we, where and when we can. There's also a fiscal benefit for that, we've talked at some length about that. But what, what we've not necessarily, or I've not necessarily paired together, is a, a different view of what this actually looks like across our eight schools. And, um, thank you to Ms. Murray and Ms. Kilbride, who worked to, um, help inform this. Let me just explain what you're looking at here. So in total, from in-district programs, these are programs that are serving students with, uh, individual education plans. We have a total of nine, uh, nine programs throughout the district. Obviously, those, those have different, um, locations based upon schools and based upon grade levels, but the total number of classrooms, uh, so first off in the table, the program is listed down the left-hand side. Many of these terms and titles you've heard before, strides, language-based, stages, and so on, and there's a brief description of the program that's listed there. The second category, sorry, the second, um, uh, column from the left, uh, provides a highlight of the number of classrooms and schools where those programs are located, and you, as you can see, there's a total of thirty classrooms that are actively offering, if you will, those various programs. The total number of students supported by these programs, that's highlighted in the third column from the left, which is a hundred and forty students over the, within these thirty classrooms. The second to the right is the number of teachers, thirty teachers, that are assigned specifically to support and oversee these programs, and the number of educational assistants, thirty-nine. Uh, and this is an important area that we'll, we can certainly talk more about, which, you know, continues to be this, we're focused on these programs, we believe it's the right thing to do, um, and we work hard to try and do so where and when there's an opportunity. But there, these are complex programs, um, and the challenges are, are, are sometimes significant, our, our school principals, I know, and Ms. Murray and Ms. Kilbride can talk, uh, more specifically about this, but, but the reality is that the challenges sometimes grow with some, some of these programs, and that may be based upon the number of students enrolled, but it may almost also be based upon, uh, the composition of the students enrolled in the program and a whole host of variety of other needs. These programs are sprink, as you know, they're sprinkled throughout our eight schools, um, and it's, it's another very important facet of school operations that by and large, some principals who are there day-to-day, certainly supported by the Office of Student Support Services, but they can't be everywhere all the time, and what has become increasingly realized is, um, to continue to operate these programs and to continue to do right by our students and our staff, we think that some more support, um, could, could be both beneficial and really helpful, um, and, and that's, that's what we're talking about in a second with the program coach. In terms of the expansion of the programs, though, as noted on this slide towards the bottom, we do have a subset of students within the Strides program that are matriculating from the Wildwood up. We've taken a very careful and thoughtful look at where it would make the most sense to, um, to have those students go. We have certainly programming, again, and we can talk more about this in a few moments, but based upon the current number of programs right now that are at the Shoshin School, collectively, we made the decision to shift this, or to add, I'm sorry, to add a third classroom for the Strides program at the Warbin Street School. Um, the program coach, I started to, a little bit out of order, I apologize, but, um, talked a little bit about it, but this is what, uh, captures there in terms of, uh, the thoughts around and the proposal before you as part of this budget process. To add an additional position, it would be a Unit A position. Um, we do not have such a position right now, specific for providing coaching in, in, in what's intended there, but as noted on the slide, um, we really, we really feel like this could provide, uh, great strength and, and support for the programs. So staffing overview, um, where, where this fiscal year twenty-six budget stands right now, um, the preliminary budget here, uh, is, is, again, taking a look at enrollment. It's, 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 I, I did in the slides, you notice, use the word stable, but after having some conversations with some of you and recognizing, um, uh, a, a little bit more, taking a look at the numbers, that, uh, better terminology could have been used here around that, in that, uh, we do have some growth that we're talking about here, thirty-three, I think it is, students. So, uh, it, we certainly, um, we certainly are not decreasing in enrollment, I mean, I think that that's the first important thing, uh, and, you know, those thirty-three students spread out over the course of eight schools and all of the grade levels may not show up as a significant may not show up as a significant or change or increase one particular grade level, but it is true. And there is growth there, and so I'll be sure to better capture that in future budget presentations as they move forward. The, the one thing to note is that this budget plan right now, though, does include an additional 1.0 FTE. I, I've used the term "business teacher" in talking to Mr. Genrin. Perhaps a more appropriate term or identifier would have been the Social Studies Program. He's here tonight, he can talk about this. But in terms of some of the changes that have happened with the new schedule at the high school, as well as the population, the retention here at the high school too, something that you know we've talked about in the past. So in any budget year, there's, there's a, with as many people as we are talking about, there's a whole host of things that can change. Sometimes it's reductions because of, say, a drop in enrollment. That's not the case going into fiscal year '26. Sometimes it's because we may have students in specialized programs that are aging out, and so we take those programs offline if we don't need them. It's not unusual or uncommon to have a variety of changes from year to year. This tries to capture those changes in the current fiscal year '26 plan. So we've identified a number of positions, 6.0 FTE, just as a reminder, full-time equivalent is what that stands for. We've identified and proposing a reduction of 6.0 FTEs in this current budget plan. But on the right side of the slide, you can see a number of positions that we've identified and that we believe at this point in time would be, would be beneficial to our programs and services. They range from, as you can see there, educational assistance, special education teacher. A subset of that is to support that additional classroom with the strides going to the Woburn, going to the Woburn Street. English language learner, I mentioned that, that's a 1.0 addition, although we, I mentioned that we already added that at the beginning of the year, but it's, that was not in the budget plan that you approved last, last year. But after July 1st, after the school year started, we felt compelled to do so. So we're, we're being true to reflect the fact that this is an addition. So when you, when you compare and contrast the positions identified for reductions with the positions recommended to be added, the net change within this current budget plan right now, that as it sits before you, represents an increase of 4.4 full-time equivalent staff in a variety of different categories. The personnel changes, the next few slides you'll see should look familiar. They are captured from, from Paul's and his team's work on, really down to the specific numbers of what we're talking about here from the budget, the, the massive budget document and the model, as Paul refers to it as, that he carefully tracks everything related to this. Fiscal year '26 preliminary budget personnel changes, you can see. When that all takes, is taken into account, the current budget includes 492.55 FTEs, and you can see the changes, many of which I just spoke about a moment ago. To be true, we've, we've also had, and this is not unusual, more positions and more budget requests than made by, from those that are responsible for budgets put forth to the central office team. And we wanted to be, we wanted to be fair and completely open to this reality, that there's a lot of good ideas that are identified by our, those that are in our, you know, budget management positions and leadership positions. And it's the case that we wish that we could support them all. We recognize, though, that we have to deliver to the school committee, and in turn, the school committee put forth a budget that can be supported by the revenue that we're going to have forthcoming from the town, which we're still learning about that. We had to make some difficult decisions based upon some of the positions requested. And, you know, at the end of the day, I suppose you can look at these as superintendent positions that I, I made the decision, I suppose, at the end, not to support, but obviously with counsel and contributions from the central office team. But I wanted to show these to you to, to give you a sense of some of the other positions that were certainly important ones to consider. The building substitutes, we can talk about more at length about any of these. They're here for a reason, they're here to be transparent with you about the requests. And perhaps you have more questions about these, and I'm happy with folks to talk about them going forward. So the preliminary budget summary, when you roll everything up. In terms of staffing, we've carefully reviewed the needs, we've talked about that. Total staffing forecasts, when all said and done, and you roll everything up together, represents a 5.29% increase over fiscal year '25. So said another way, if this was the final budget that moved forward with the total number of staff that are included here, and you ultimately approved this and we didn't make any changes, the total staffing costs, personnel costs, 5.29% increase over fiscal year '25. The non-salary, as you know, represents a really very important and fairly significant category as well, too, from any fiscal year. This includes things like out-of-district tuitions, transportation costs, a whole host of other costs. It is sizable. I mentioned at the outset, transportation costs for out-of-district transportation was a pretty significant spike. You can see that at $350,000, almost $350,000. Out-of-district tuitions forecasted right now to increase by approximately $185,000. Just bring attention to that, that that's, that's our best guess right now in terms of out-of-district tuitions. That could change tomorrow, that could change in January if we had new students that became part of our responsibility. But based upon what we know right now, $185,000 adjustment towards out-of-district tuitions is what we're planning. Total non-salary costs, if this budget proposal that moves, is to move forward, that raises by 5.4, 5.40%, a little over $550,000, if no changes are made. So non-salary expenses, a little bit of a deeper dive into this. What has that looked like from year to year? You can see the various categories that roll up into this. And some have been mentioned, out-of-district tuitions, information technology, transportation, athletics, et cetera. The one utility, sometimes people ask about this, the one utility that the school department is responsible for is electricity. 100%, I think, right, completely, electricity?
Yes.
Yeah. The other utilities, though, are, are supported by the town. You can see down the bottom what fiscal year '23 non-salary expenses were, just a little over $9.5 million. And then fiscal year '24, a little over 10 million. Fiscal year '25, 10.2 million. And fiscal year '26, preliminary budget right now, just a little bit over 10.7 million dollars. Non-salary changes are captured in this slide, again, directly from, sorry?
Want me to take this one?
Sure.
Okay. Non-salary changes. The, the changes from FY '25 to '26 for non-salary items, essentially transportation, general ed, general education, and athletic. Where FY '26 would be year three of a three-year contract, but we do have two option years as well. It's 17 buses, as you know, we went from 16 to 17. It's about a 5% increase in cost. So of that, $77,000, about 67 of it is general ed transportation, another 10,000 is athletic, which is part of the transportation contract. Technology and classroom technologies, there's a little bit of a bump there. And essentially, that's our, our new telephone system. It's mainly the Zoom phone system that's driving that cost up. There are some reductions in that category, but for the most part, that's what that is. Out-of-district tuitions, essentially Christine Murray worked with this, with her staff and so forth, and it's the same process we've gone through. They look at students and what programs they're in, what programs they possibly could be moving into, students aging out and so forth. So there's a total, you know, change is about $185,000 increase in the out-of-district tuition amounts. One of the big ones is the out-of-district transportation. We're part of the SEEM collaborative, along with, I forget the number of districts, nine or 10 other districts. In our transportation for out-of-district, schools is through the SEEM collaborative. They negotiated a contract and so forth. There was a very large increase, they signed a contract toward the end of last fiscal year. And it had in FY '25, almost a 35% increase in the cost per minivan, if you will, and in '26, another 20% increase. Part of that is because we, that contract that SEEM had negotiated had no increases for three or four years prior to that. So I think the transportation company made up for that in, in the two years. So that's a, that's a large increase of almost $271,000. Furniture and equipment, we just, reduction of a little less than $20,000. Showed that here just because in our capital budget, we do have some furniture, furniture line items. So we're assuming that we'll use that to offset anything in the local budget, provided that's what we get in our capital budget. Legal service is a small increase. And other changes, which is everything else we talked about, about $1,800, so $1,852. So the total increase in non-salaries, about $552,000, a 5.4%. It's really made up, you know, you can argue the, you know, the, the transportation, the technology, and the out-of-district tuitions and transportation. Excuse me. The next slide is our FY '26 through '30 capital requests. If you have any questions, Ken's going to have to answer all these, because he doesn't want me answering technology questions. But most of these are technology items. You will see there's the minivan, there's multiple lines, the town asks us to show a line for each minivan we have. So just to go through, so we have Chromebook replacements in FY '26 of $75,000, elementary projectors at 55, minivan six, replacement of $100,000. I mentioned one other thing in minivan 14, well, passenger trans, transit van in FY '27. Lisa Ferretta had worked with athletic director and thought we should see if we could get a 14-passenger van to help some of the smaller teams and, and other things. So we put that in FY '27. We have middle school laptop, just top replacements, north and west replacements, high school, middle school, security cameras, middle school auditorium. Nope, that's not it. Furniture and whiteboard, just $50,000. That's what I mentioned before, that we took the furniture out of the local budget, it's here in the capital. And we have some security improvements for $60,000. So in FY '26, we're requesting $631,000. Again, this is another item that we'll talk to the town manager about and so forth. But these are our capital requests. And, you know, obviously FY '27, if you look at the bottom number, $1,001,000 is pretty high, so. But we just want to get everything out there and kind of go from there.
So just bear with us, we've got some more slides to wrap this up. Preliminary budget highlights follow when you throw, or when you roll everything together that we just reviewed. This provides a comparison for fiscal year '25. Combination of both salary and non-salary lines here. You can see the fiscal year '25 budget totaling a little more than $49,445,000. Fiscal year '26 budget, as currently stands before you, salary, $41.299.765. Non-salary, $10.710.774, $680,400 total. Preliminary budget for fiscal year '26, just a little bit over $52 million. Percentage change, you can see the breakdown, as was talked about earlier, 5.29% salary, 5.40% non-salary, combined 5.32%. It, you know, where we stand right now, and this is the same as any given fiscal year, in December this time, we come forward and present to you a budget plan that's preliminary. It's not a guess, there's been a lot of time and a lot of weeks and a lot of hours spent by the folks who are in this room, I mentioned earlier, and, and our team to put together this, this, this plan. But it is preliminary, and it's preliminary in the sense that we understand that there has to be a source to fund this. And that source, of course, coming from the town. As has been the case in the past, shortly following this time period, we will have discussions with the town manager and his leadership team to better understand what the resources are forecasted to be from the town. This would be true of other departments as well. Maybe the biggest department, the school department, but obviously there's police and there's fire, and there's other departments that help make this town run and operate and provide services that the citizens expect. But when you take a look back in terms of where our increases have stood from year to year, you can see a landscape view of that. But it starts to bring it into focus in terms of not knowing what that number is from the town manager and his team yet, but we will when we come back by, by the time of the new year. This number clearly right now as a preliminary budget is, it's, it's higher than we've been in the past. And so to try and be realistic here, if this is going to be a number that's beyond what the town manager believes, that the town can support, we're going to have some, we're going to have some work to do, I would anticipate here, to make some adjustments that is not out of the norm from other previous years at all, but it's, it's just a, it's a challenging place to be right now, not knowing exactly what that is. But I think the important thing is that wherever we're going to go, we, we look forward to you a preliminary budget plan that we believe is thoughtful, that supports the programs and services that we believe the district and our students need. And so to, to do anything to change that will certainly be a reduction in the provision of services that we think is necess, is necessary to support our, our programs. Next steps in the process, this looks, it's the trajectory that has been in the, you know, is usual from year to year. Nothing here is different. New town manager may be in place, but he's conveyed to us his intention to, by and large, follow the same budgetary processes in the past. We have a January 22nd school committee meeting, that's the second one in January, but that's the one that we have identified for the recommended budget to you right now. Town manager's budget presentation comes at the end of January, January 27th, to be specific. February 12th, we are currently forecasted to have a budget hearing. This is something that we have to have an actual formal budget hearing under Mass General Law. That's the date that we've identified right now. And then from there, a meeting with finance committee and the town meeting that is scheduled for May 3rd. I know that that's a ton of information, we recognize that. Thank you for your patience to work through the slides. And certainly, very much welcome questions from the committee at this point.
And thank you to you and your team for getting us to this point. I know there's, to your point, any number of steps and hours and work to go, but to get here is no small task, so thank you. Questions from the committee? Who wants to start? Mr. Turner?
I've only, I've only got a few. So first of all, I do want to go back to the enrollment. You did mention the projection for this coming year would be 33 additional students on top of six additional students in the pri, in the current school year. On slide 12, actually, no, that one's on five, sorry. And so I really, I do want to highlight that, because we had a lot of conversation among, within this group, but also across the town, about prior year decreases. So we are clearly on the path of increase, stabilizing this year and back into an increase coming forward. And I think that's a really important point. If you're going to have the dialogue when it goes down, we need to have the dialogue when it's going back up. And so I wanted to highlight that. And then on slide 12, that is, sorry, I didn't know who had the clicker these days. That is such an important slide. The one before, that one. I, I think for particularly, I mean, for anyone who's involved with the district, but particularly for those who aren't involved with the district, and for people who don't have children in the district, or people who have children who are not involved in these programs, the, the, the amount of support that is, what is appropriate for these students to receive the education they need is really significant. I mean, it's, it's 30 teachers for 140 students, 39 education assistants, and there's others who would be involved as well, if I'm not mistaken. Reading specialists, math specialists, OT, PT, speech pathologists. And so the number of people who are, what, what is appropriate to serve these students is a significant part of, when you talk about the, we have 500, almost 500 staff, a very significant material number go to provide these very important services. Like, I, this chart is fantastic. I think it's, I think it's really, really good as a communication tool to people around town, within the district, within the finance committee, but around town as well, to understand what is the nature of education in, at this point in time, as opposed to when some of us went to school and those students would have been served by 30 teachers. It's a very different thing from 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, and it's the right thing for the students. So I, I think this slide is, is fantastic and really an important communication tool. I do have a general question, Paul, just, I guess it's a detailed one. On out-of-district transportation for students that have special needs, does that go into our funding formula for circuit breaker? Is there any offset that comes back for transportation? I know the tuition does factor into circuit breaker, but I don't remember offhand. Does transportation factor into that as well?
Yes, the, the circuit breaker reimbursement rate's about 75%. Transportation has been added to that, but it's much less than the 75%. So I think in this fiscal year, it might be 40-something percent. I'm not exactly 100% accurate, but yeah, that gets factored in when the Office of Student Support Services files their claims at the end of the year. the Office of Student Support Services files their claims at the end of the year, um, transportation's included.
Yeah, so I know it's, it's a year lagging, but it is, it is potentially impactful towards that number as well, which is good, not, maybe it's not as much as it should be, but, but that's good to know. And then, um, on the fourteen-passenger, this is one specific capital item, the fourteen-passenger van, um, I know there's been a lot of discussion with, with, with Ms. Ferretta and, and the sports teams, and how useful that would be, and how often we could avoid sending a full-size bus for a team that's got ten athletes, for example. Um, looking at the spread of capital, is there any reason, maybe it's the ordering cycle for these sorts of vehicles, why we wouldn't do it in FY twenty-six?
We'd have to, there's only so much money, and we, we talked about, you know, the town funding, so we, we talked about that, but we wanted to, I think, first get on the radar of the town, because the town purchases these vehicles.
Yep.
The other, the, the minivans are on a, um, there's an inventory, and they go through and with, uh, Ms. Rector, as well as the town. Um, they determine the replacement timeframe for each of the minivan, so it's, it's not just, we're gonna replace this one, it's, there's a reason for it.
For sure.
Um, and we just thought we wanted to put at least a placeholder in for the, the van, um, so the town knows that that's what we're looking at, looking to do, and then given the FY twenty-six, um, capital request, that really, we didn't feel, we thought were more important than that, to be honest with you.
Fair, fair. It's, that one particularly has a, it's, it's an incremental reduction in our other transportation costs, as soon as we get that capital line item in there. So, in some ways, i- if, if we're asked to cut, one way we could cut is to spend more on capital. So, that's, that's, that's buckets, but maybe that's a, a useful offset there. Um, and then the last thing, I, I have to say, I struggle with slide thirty-one, because the way I view that slide, and the potential, if we have to cut the budget, is not dollars, it's educational impact. And I just want to say that, that, that you guys have done, that the team has done a fantastic job building a budget, it's the right thing for the students, it's the right thing for the town, and we should be really aware that going down from that represents down from what you, the educators, think is appropriate. And, and I, and so that's the way I view that slide, and, uh, and I wanted to say that. And again, thank you for everyone and all your efforts on this, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Samaha?
Um, yeah, just to sort of follow up, um, I agree with what Mr. Turner is saying, especially when he's talking about the sub-separate, that slide that, um, that's up there too, um, is to also, you know, remember that, you know, although these costs might be increasing, if we didn't have these programs here, these students, we'd still be obligated to service these students, which would cause those out-of-district placements to go up even more. Um, so it, it makes a lot of money, um, and I appreciate, um, the attention that this gets, um, but I think the other part of it, too, is that it makes educational sense, too. It's not just about saving money, but it's, you know, it's better for kids to keep them, um, in the, in the community.
Exactly.
Um, so I just wanted to, uh, raise, um, raise that point. Um, I, um, I, I liked, I, I appreciate all the work that goes into this, and everybody that, that helped out. I, I actually really liked the slide where you talked, um, about the positions that were requested, um, but weren't included in the proposal, because I think that speaks to how, the work that your team does in, in, in saying, all these people, you know, you know, there's a lot of needs, right? And everybody wants to get, and it's really hard work to sort of pare that down, to get to, you know, the meat of it. So it's not like, you know, when people look at this budget, that like, this is a, you know, some grandiose, you know, budget, like, there's real, real needs that would be great if we had, but we have to, um, make, you know, make these decisions, so I appreciate, um, that part of it. One question that I had, um, was about the, the, um, English language learners, the, the ELs, are they co- are they concentrated in a grade level, or are they spread out kind of evenly? One of the things that I'm thinking about is if, is trying to figure out, are they concentrated in the lower grade levels, and that, you know, maybe this is indicative of having more and more students at that, you know, at that grade level? I don't, I'm curious.
Please.
So, um, I think, you know, in my time here, uh, over the last four years, I think the, they were relatively spread out grade, uh, grade level-wise, however, in the last couple of years, we've seen a lot of students coming into the early childhood that are English learners, um, so we're seeing a greater population coming in at the lower grades. Um, that is definite, and we do see, um, we, we have, we have English learners in every building, um, and we are seeing, you know, pockets in which then, of course, those kids move from one school to the next, or, so where our staffing is, um, you know, really, we try to maintain flexibility with the EL staffing, so that they can move where the needs are for those students. But every one of our EL teachers teaches in a minimum of two schools, if not three, so they're constantly all over the district every day.
Okay, thank you. Which brings, which is a nice segue to my last point, is that, just to bring it back to, so everyone is aware, you know, um, this idea of a consolidated K to five school is gonna have some costs associated with it, clearly, but it's also gonna be a reduction in costs, I would imagine, um, for, you know, in this budget, because a lot of this stuff is dealing with, you know, seventeen different schools, or whatever.
I think it's eight.
Well, I don't teach math, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna go real quick, just because my, one of my questions sort of comes off of what Mr. Samaha was saying, we're talking about the, this li- this slide with the English language learners, ninety-three in the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, tw- a hundred and sixty-seven, if I can see that right?
Yes.
Not suggesting that one is correct or not, but are we seeing more of these students move into the district, or are we getting better at capturing this kind of information?
We're seeing students move into the district.
Okay. Thank you.
And Massachusetts is also just seeing-
Overall.
Overall statewide, large increases over, you know, a decade.
I suspected that might be the case. Okay, thank you. Who's next? Dr. McCully?
Thanks, just go down the line.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, yep, so thanks for putting this together. Agreed with some of my colleagues, a lot of thought and effort went into this, clearly. So, just a few questions. Uh, I think one, the big takeaways I had here was just how much special ed really takes up a lot of the budget, right? And how that's where we're seeing predominantly a lot of the growth, and everything like that. Uh, to that, and I think it's a follow-on from what Mr. Samaha was asking, with some of these programs, it, can there be some efforts where we can find efficiencies for consolidating them in certain school buildings, or anything like that? Is that been explored at all?
Um, well, I'll start, but I'll welcome Christine or Moore to, to, to join me. So, first off, I think it's just important to note, and Christine or Moore, if one of you want to come down, please, but, you know, one of the things that, and I appreciate the, the earlier comments, you know, and, and this is about trying to do what's right educationally, um, for children and for families, but there is this cost component, right?
Yeah.
That does go hand in hand. Couple of years ago, we were looking back, Paul and I, we were looking back at some past presentations, where around the stable and with other, um, with other governing bodies in town, we, we profiled this very, this very facet of, yes, there's a, there's a cost for building the programs and having staff in district, but we compared that to average out-of-district costs, um, and we have, took, took back, it was twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four, and we absolutely can provide another column in that table that we're just looking at, with an average out-of-district tuition cost, of what we would be talking about. Um, so they're inextricably linked, clearly, there's an impact on our budget, budget, bottom-line staffing, um, we're all well aware of the understanding that, in past years at least, when our enrollment was going down, some of our staffing was going up, and the questions are about, well, why could that be? And, uh, as best as to try and explain the fact that our student population is changing, their needs are changing, this is just one of those examples. And in this particular case, because we have a group of students that are matriculating into a school where we don't have the program, or we don't have the space, the appropriate space, um, which really is, uh, the storyline here as well, uh, at the Shawshin, not to, right, but we're talking about specific schools, and so we had to consider that. We, we, we have some challenges with our buildings in terms of available space, appropriate space, handicap accessibility space, and so those are all factors that we're also thinking about and thinking through, so Christine or Moore, thanks for joining us.
I appreciate the question, and I think, um, kind of with resource allocation and consolidation, we have to think about student outcomes and, and how that impacts, so, um, we're constantly looking at enrollment, we're constantly looking at the student population and the needs, and, and how we can best, um, address that. So, um, in short, no, you know, um, looking at the schools, we really looked at, as Dr. Brand said, what that looks like, having, um, the current enrollment at the ECC level with, with the student population that we have, um, the need for opening up an additional classroom. Um, we did look at the Shawshin, but this is arising now, that, um, with the Woburn Street population, um, that would be, that would serve best at the Woburn Street School. Um, based on kind of enrollment data, student population, and what that looks like. Um, yes, we try to look at, um, many options and, and how that can work, but after consulting kind of with the building principals, um, looking at the student need and, and the numbers. We did have a bubble, kind of, um, at the ECC level through the pandemic, and we're looking to, um, those needs were just met, or are being met this year at, um, the Wildwoods, so that, that group of students would then matriculate, as Glenn said, to the Woburn Street School. So that would be an additional classroom teacher, um, at assistance to support that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess maybe to follow on from that, I guess I can ask everyone here, it's specifically around the strides program, because when I look at the slide with all the special services there, it's the most intense one, and understandably so. Are we seeing significant year-over-year growth in this program? Like, more students moving into the district and everything? And should we be prepared to continue to see this trend grow also in the years to come? Because it is so intensive, right?
Right. We looked at some of the numbers, um, regarding the strides, and in FY twenty-four, there were fifteen enrolled students. Um, at the elementary, there were eleven enrolled, so that was in FY twenty-four. Currently, um, we have eleven enrolled, um, at the ECC, and at the elementary, there are fourteen enrolled students, so the projection really looks at twelve potentially at the ECC, um, and around sixteen students for the elementary. So that's where we see the increase, kind of more at the elementary level, um, I would say, and I would say roughly, that's probably about twenty to thirty percent growth.
Yeah, yeah, so quite significant, when those kids need so much support and everything like that.
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. Uh, my last question about special ed, if I can still ask.
Good job.
Is, uh, the special ed coordinator, uh, personally, I, I like this idea, I think it's a good idea, especially since we have such disparate services spread over the schools, and thank you for explaining why that is and everything. Um, I think you explained it a little bit in your slides, but I'd just like to understand a little bit better. How is it, obviously the work's being done now, right? So, how is that currently happening now? And with this position, how is it going to be improved, or better, or more efficient, or anything like that?
Sure. So, as Dr. Brand explained a little bit about the intensity of, of, of student need, um, we do have a great offering of programs in the district, this person would really serve as a special education coach, so different than as an interim director, more being the coordinator, our building principals really oversee these programming, um, in the schools, it would be more of a unit A special education teacher to special education teacher, sorry, I'm not looking over here, too, I just, um, that would really support the instructional practices, the curriculum, methodology, um, behavior management strategies, so we're really looking at, um, different than your boss kind of overseeing and, and coming into a program, but really having, um, that unit A coach for instructional practices. So we see it with reading, we see it, um, you know, through math, and, and really focusing in on our programming, and what that would look like, um, is the focus for this. Um, so really, kind of the consistency through district pro- programming at all our schools, as you saw, the thirty classrooms, the oversight would really be day-to-day supporting those teachers, um, in the classroom with, with program management, data collection, progress monitoring.
Sure.
So, just act like the bridge between all, between the schools, and aligning kind of the language, the resources, the strategies, the tools, kind of from school to school across.
So, really getting someone at that, not-
Like hands-on.
High-up level, but mid-level, that can really be more hands-on, and really kind of work directly with the teachers and the staff and everything like that, and it's more-
Be really connected to the teachers and the staff and the programs.
Sure, okay, thank you for that.
Part of it really aligns with our district strategic planning, um, looking at the new school and what that might look like, um, our equity audit, which is also on the website, and our Walker report, um, these kind of all support and align that, um, this position. So, we're really excited about it, and hopefully, um, people will see the need of benefiting our, our programs in the district.
It'd be a great benefit to the staff, working together too, with the coach.
Sure.
Bringing them all together.
Okay.
One of the, one of the things that's not mentioned on the slide, I can, but just to, you know, the hope, I think, here, I, I would imagine some of our principals would, would, would agree with this, that some of these programs and the intensity, um, staff retention is difficult and hard, and, um, attracting is a challenge, but that holds true anywhere, not just here in Wilmington, but for some of these more intensive programs, but to have somebody who can, um, not be in a evaluative mode, but be there as a, as a true coach, as Christine said, in a supportive role, um, part of the hope here, too, is that environments can be created where people are, are safe seeking that advice, comfortable being able to do so, that can only, hopefully, improve the experience for students first and foremost, staff secondly, along the way, hopefully that can help, you know, create some retention as well, too. So it's not, it's hard to put numbers around that, and hence why it wasn't identified here on the slide, but, you know, that, that, I think will be a byproduct of this, if we can move forward with it, so.
Great, no, thanks. I have one more question, not related to special ed, if that's okay?
Well, yours.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, so, it's a little bit related to capital planning, but it's not what we kind of focus on, it's more, have we talked with the town about what the town would like to do to, um, you know, kind of fix up the buildings, or part of their routine maintenance plan and everything, you know, um, things like fresh coat of paint, you know, ton- new tile floors, new lighting, new windows, anything like that?
Um, so, I, uh, I put forth a request to the respective, um, the town, the, the, the town leaders, department heads, who will receive building grounds and maintenance, um, and I do have back from them what their capital requests are going into twenty-six, um, and any other plans, so I can compi- I will compile that.
Okay.
And I can bring that for the committee to, to, to certainly see, and get a, a longer-term view of what's on, on their minds as well, too.
Yeah, that'd be very useful, I see, thank you.
I, if I could, I know that, um, during the budget process, we ask schools if there's any facility improvements and stuff, or maintenance, that they'd like to see done, and the list that, that were received, I sent out to, um, both the head of public buildings and, uh, the DPW. I know they've already started to do some of those things, and those are more like paint.
Yeah.
Fixing little things, so they're not capital projects, but they're just maintenance-type things.
That's right.
So I know at some of the schools, they, they've already started to do some painting and so forth, so.
Okay.
Mr. Exdale.
First, I want to thank all the district and school leaders, uh, with us in the room today, for all, all their work getting, uh, getting this in front of us, uh, today, uh, and I want to congratulate Mr. Kyra on the birth of his second child, very recently, haven't seen him since it happened, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to, if we could go to slide eighteen, uh, which is the personnel adjustments. Um, I would like to unpack some of these a little bit more, kind of as we were just doing for the, um, special education program coach. Uh, so we have, in the reduction, we have a proposal of reducing, uh, four FTE ed assistants and two special education teachers, and then adding six FTE educational assistants and a bunch of teachers. Now, obviously, um, ed assistants are not just interchangeable, so it's, you can't necessarily just take one person and just switch them over to another job, but if we could talk a little bit about what, what needs we think that we don't need to fulfill, um, that allows us to make some of these reductions on the left side of the, of the table, uh, and then talk a li- in a little more detail about what we are gain, like, what, you know, essentially what the needs are that is causing us to, um, to think that we want these additional positions on the right, um, and I would like to hear a little bit more about the, you know, the business teacher, and the, you know, what the six, you know, what the six different new, uh, ed assistants and special education teachers, what we feel the, the needs are, um, on the right side. So, I don't know who the best people are to speak to those.
I, I can take a little-
Go to the, this slide, it has more clarification.
Yeah, but, so the four, the reduction of four ed assistants that you mentioned, tho- those are result of students that might have aged out, or their ed assistant positions we haven't filled, in the determination by the principals, we don't have to fill, so it's ju- and then we're adding six ed, ed assistants, so if there's any ed assistance that their student's aging out, they may be ed assistant in one of the six that we're adding. Um, but the adding is really, I think, more- But the adding is really, I think, most all of them have to do with our strides program. Adding another classroom at the Woburn Street is two ed assistants. I think in the Shawshine, we have probably a couple that we added do the strides program as well. And we have a behavioral specialist that we added. And what was the other one? I'm just looking right here.
Did you say speech?
No, it's, let me see, it's two, four, five.
There's another special education teacher in addition to the program coach. Four.
Yeah, and then we have, what was I trying to find? Yes, we have the Shawshine. Shawshine might have three ed assistants added to do strides program, Woburn Street too with the new program and then the a behavioral specialist. So that's the six of those. Four, some of those are unfilled, but some of the assistants there may soon age out, maybe one of the four. Yeah, and one of the six added, but if the other programs.
If I can, if it'd be all right, Mr. Exdale, we can certainly provide a bit of a more of a crosswalk to this, if you will, and more context for these exact positions. We've, I think it should be noted, we've intentionally tried to be not vague, but not tie them to particular programs or schools because of where we're at in the budget process right now. We recognize that to do so could cause some angst amongst some staff at this early juncture and not necessarily if we had conversations with them, so especially when we're talking about reductions. But if it would be all right, we can certainly come back with this far more flushed out this table and the specific moving parts of this far more flushed out and more context. You mentioned the high school teacher, for example, with Mr., we can certainly build out that. So you have a much clearer picture of what's entailed here, if that'd be all right.
Okay, yeah, I think that I, since we're requesting additional staff and an increase in our overall FTE count, I want to make sure that we're really showing the benefits that we expect to get and the needs that we have. I mean, I think, and I think we've been doing that, talking about the English Language Learner increase, Yale students and the special education, what Christine and Mar will just were just talking about. I want to make sure that we're kind of doing that for for all of the requested positions.
Yeah, makes sense and we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
Well, I'm gonna say, my colleagues have asked basically every question that I could have, I could have thought of. I would say I would love for Mr. Gendron to join us for a moment just to briefly touch on the business teacher position, maybe for like a minute, because I know folks probably want to get out of here after working so hard on this budget, so.
Happy to, happy to.
Good evening.
Hi, hello, everyone. So I think there's kind of a short version and a long version and somewhere in between, so I think I'll aim for in-between.
Sure.
You know, when I first arrived, the high school in the district was working with low-retention numbers from eighth grade to ninth grade. There was the three-year average of 58.6% of eighth graders coming here for ninth grade. You know, over a course of many years of that happening, the enrollment shrunk quite a bit. And at that time, a reduction of four positions, instructional positions, was determined appropriate. And, you know, based on those retention numbers, it projected for next year for the high school population to be around 512 students, whereas we're actually 625. So while, you know, tonight's presentation talks about year-to-year changes, I think it's important to go back to when those reductions happened and what the proposed enrollment looked like. With the current expectations for next year being very similar to what our population is right now, you know, 70% of the current eighth graders would resemble what the outgoing senior class looks like, so I don't expect much change there. However, over the past three years, the transfer in numbers have increased significantly. So not only the retention, but also the transfer in pattern has increased our enrollment beyond expectation. In addition to, to get to the business part, in addition to the 4.0 reduction, we also have a tech integration specialist who has helped teaching classes, .5 FTE under this business and computer course umbrella, who contractually we're supposed to phase into a non-instructional role that we haven't had the flexibility to do so. While all that is happening, NEASC identified a need to review our schedule and make sure our schedule is working for all students. For a number of reasons, it was determining, it was determined that it wasn't and we made some changes, which included adding an elective block to make sure that all students, regardless of IEP status or other commitments, have access to electives, thereby driving up elective demand. And so the combination of those changes came to a head in the course selection process last year, where all students, grades nine through 12, had an additional elective selection. And the business department, again, I say business department, but it's not strictly business. Here's some examples of other courses that are under that umbrella. Digital literacy and applied digital skills, introduction to web design, sports and entertainment marketing, digital and social media marketing, entrepreneurship, and more. So it's no surprise when students had new elective currency, there were lots of courses there they were excited to take, and we saw a boom in the business department tallies, so much so that we couldn't satisfy them. You know, we had 3.5 teachers in that, but as we phase out the tech integration specialist, that's really three. Shout out to that, to the tech integration specialist who's still teaching .2 this year out of like understanding that we're transitioning through this. As we approach this next year, we currently have some teachers teaching out of their departments to help satisfy some of that business demand, specifically with our personal finance course, which is a graduation requirement. We felt like we couldn't just tell students, no, we don't have the staffing for that. And so we have kind of a short-term plan to accommodate them this year. But as we look to future years, you know, we anticipate that the demand will remain high for these courses. The feedback on the schedule has been really positive. We actually, as I discussed in October, we have our formal survey out right now. We're collecting feedback and it looks very, very positive. So we don't expect, you know, negative feedback on the schedule. There is the chance that when we do all the course selection tallies for students this year, that because so much of the business demand was satisfied, that some of this extra elective currency goes elsewhere, perhaps to computer science courses. You may recall last year that we recycled a math position into a computer science position to try to internally accommodate student need without, you know, coming asking for additional positions. But it does feel like we are at kind of the upper ceiling of how many seats we are able to offer to students. We have 111 sections that are full or beyond full and another 77 that have one or two seats left. And each student who we schedule or who transfers in has a unique eight-class combination of courses, which is what makes scheduling at the high school very unique. And if they take any singleton classes, classes that we only have one section of, a lot of our AP classes are one section, many of our electives are one section, then that eight-course configuration gets locked and anchored in places and becomes really, really restrictive. So, you know, I think we did this schedule, maximized our capacity, but it does, it would change the flexibility for staffing, really, most importantly, the access and choice for students if we had additional staffing in that umbrella of classes.
Thank you very much. That was a great explanation. And I think, you know, it makes sense that there is a rising demand amongst younger people for kind of the skills they see in that in that business side of things. But it sounds like it has positive kick-on benefits for the rest of the teaching staff to have that, so makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions?
While he's here, please, to follow up and directly tangent or related to that. I do want to shout out, and talking about overall enrollment, we talk a lot about eighth and ninth, but you highlighted, and I think we should mention, that over the last four years, ninth and to 10th were 102%, 109%, 105%, 108, a carrying average of 108%. So clearly, we're seeing a lot of kids coming into the school, transferring in for sophomore year, and then and then as well, junior and senior year are both well over 100% as well. So the enrollment is going up in each of those years as well, which reflects really well on the on the program you're running and the way the whole staff at the high school is working on things. So it's an important component of the enrollment picture and does.
I appreciate you highlighting that because there really is a pattern of, you know, sometimes families move to Wilmington, but also sometimes students leave in ninth grade and decide, whoa, 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 I'm going back. And we don't see a whole lot of the other direction, students coming for ninth grade and deciding, I'm going to try something else. So I think that's a really important pattern. Another one that I think is important to consider is the time that those students transfer back, because we're seeing a large number that transfer back after October 1st, you know, when the reporting and some of the state funding, you know, is sorted out. So as we continue to study those patterns, if that holds out, I think it's another one, you know, as we talk about budgets, that is worth discussing.
And I think just, you bring up a good point as well. We had conversation before, at some length with other, you know, this committee, the Finance Committee Select Board, in terms of making sure that we are offering the very best high school program we could. And that that work started under Ms. Peters, continued under Mr. Gendron and the staff, taking an inward look at what what programs or course offerings were being offered, where were there gaps? You might recall that conversation of a few years ago, taking a critical look through a lens of what are other schools offering? Where might we have an opportunity to expand and build programs and bring more online? And not to ask Mr. Gendron to go into that detail, but I know for a fact that there have been new course offerings that come back to that conversation and that planning to make sure that our high school would offer the very best program. Undoubtedly, there's a lot of factors of why they're coming back here, no doubt. Undoubtedly, though, that's part of it, because the word around what the program can offer, what they can access, what courses they can take certainly serves, I'm sure, the school well and as a source of attraction for students to recognize what they can they can experience here at Wilmington High School.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for letting me go out of turn.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Okay. I think that.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity. Again, thank you, folks, for being here and for your support. You're dismissed.
As is often the case, you are more than welcome to stay. However, we're not offended if you leave.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody. Enjoy a well-deserved break.
Take the rest of the night off.
I meant next week.
Oh, oh.
That wasn't clear at all.
Winter break coming.
Thank you, everybody. All right. We still have business to conduct.
Enjoy a nice break tonight. Enjoy a post-8:30 break.
Get back to work.
All right. I tried, thank you. All right, so that, I know we took things a little out of order. That was preliminary budget and capital planning presentation. So going back, we need to do nurse substitute rate adjustment. Do you want to start that one or?
Sure, sure, just for those tuning in, we proposed earlier this evening an adjustment to the substitute rate. The administration tracks very carefully and closely all of our, to the best that we can, our compensation levels across the board. That includes for positions such as this, substitutes. We came to realize that we were falling behind some of our counterpart districts and that has had an adverse impact on our ability to to attract substitute nurses, of which we need quite a few. When a nurse is absent or when we have trips that are running and nurses have to follow those those students on that trip, we need to have a substitute nurse in. So the administration earlier this evening proposed an adjustment to the current rate of one from $165 to an adjustment of $200 per day, and we're seeking the approval of the school committee tonight.
Very good. Anybody have any questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to adjust the pay rate for substitute nurses to $200 a day. Moved by Mr. Golden. Is there a second? Mr. Turner, any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, let's do public comment. We did receive one comment submission, which is in the packet. Out of order, but now the superintendent's report. Back to you, Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Two items tonight, both of which have items in the packet. I'll go in order. Miss School Principal's search, that is underway. That's, as you know, Mr. Kyra is serving as an interim principal following the late resignation by his predecessor, Dr. Quirk. The district's committed to launching a search for this. Mr. Stern Armstrong, as always, is doing a great job leading this. Information's gone out to the community, just wanted to share with you where we're at with this. So in the packet, the memo, what we're hoping to find in terms of representation from our stakeholder groups to serve on the search committee, that's outlined there. The, an update on the deadline, search committee orientation, the deadline to express interest, I believe, is this Friday. Thank you. And so that messaging has gone out to parent guardians and staff. And as soon as we get back, it'll be active in the first part of the new year with that committee coming together, taking a review of applicants and and moving forward from there. So we are following the same type of process we follow for other key leadership roles and I'm confident that this process will serve the middle school well going forward. So just want to share that with you. At our next meet, I can share with you who those folks are that are serving on the community. Happy to take any questions if you have.
One quick one.
Can I just state the invitation did go out twice? So it did go out, I don't remember now, a week and a half ago. It did go out again today, just requesting additional parents and educators.
Thank you for that. Mr. Turner?
Wouldn't suggest this necessarily at the elementary level, but perhaps at the middle school and certainly the high school. Would it be appropriate to have an eighth or ninth grader or two, just to hear a student voice? The middle school is such a unique environment and has a lot of interesting dynamics. I don't know in terms of a principal search if that's appropriate. We've done it a lot with strategic planning and those sorts of places.
I just did that for you because I asked Andrea about it. She's only done it historically with the high school.
Okay, thank you.
But certainly, I mean, I appreciate the feedback, something that I can talk with her about and we can consider. I will say that when we do bring, or what I would envision is when these folks are here, we'll definitely assemble a student group to meet with candidates, semifinalists as part of it. So I know that's a little different than what you're talking about, but having an interface between students and I think at this level is totally appropriate.
I think that, and that approach might be perfectly fine, whatever you guys do, but I was just thinking of student input as an appropriate, some form.
Some kind of engagement.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Others? Dr. McCully?
Yep, just a couple of questions on this. So curious, how many candidates have applied so far for the position?
Last I'm told, as of a couple of days ago, there were nine, I think.
Okay, great. And then you were, you said that a survey went out, collecting all the feedback and everything like that? Be very interesting to see what the community wants and everything like that too, because yeah, I think I speak for myself here, but maybe others in the community feel this position's really, really critical in the middle school just because of the history and everything like that. So I think this could be a really great time to, you know, really find a transformative leader here.
Yeah, and just to clarify on the survey results, and we, you know, we recognize it is a tricky time of the year to try and capture feedback or anything. And just to answer that in case folks are wondering, we set this up this way because we really think that it positions us best to be at the leading pack for anyone who's looking for a leadership position. This is the time. So that allows us to, you know, to hit the new year with, running with that. But the information compiled from those results certainly is not secretive, it's not a secret. It's shared with members of the search committee and we can pull together a compilation to share with the wider folks too as well. But just in case people are wondering, that that information in raw form comes back to members of the search committee so they can get a sense of what that, what's on people's minds, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving along.
Second item tonight is regarding school day campus access. And there's a memo that's included in your packet on that, of which I've tried to outline a thought, I suppose, I suppose a proposal ultimately, but it's a, it's a direction that I'm hopeful the committee will ultimately support. As, you know, as outlined, first off, right now, our campus is, our outdoor campus I'm referring to, not inside the building, their grounds and fields are wide open for anyone to use at any time. I know for a fact that that's, that doesn't hold true for other school communities. If you were to ask me, which, I don't know, but I would suspect, if I had to guess and if there was way to, some way to know, I would suspect that more than not would have their school grounds and such close to the general public during the time that school is in session. We do not, we do not have any, any such, you know, expectations in place, there's no signage in place. We don't. I'm not sure how, if that's always been the case, but certainly as long as I have and I think far before that. Over time, some of our principals, as well as some of our school resource officers, have shared that there, you know, there are from time to time situations with, making an assumption that they're members of the community, but they may not be direct members of the Wilmington community, to be fair. But where the paths cross, so to speak, on playgrounds, on fields. But where the paths cross, so to speak, on playgrounds, on fields, while school is in session and and students are out for classes or for recess. And that proves an administrative challenge. And and so, as outlined in the proposal, after some consideration of that, some accounts and discussions with some of our school leaders, conversation with our school resource officers, our town manager and chief of police, all are on board of and believe that it would be appropriate to move in this direction. And that direction being that while school is in session, you know, their their school grounds and that for the general public, they shouldn't be on school grounds during that time. So, the proposal here would be to move in that direction, if if the committee is supportive of that. And then, in turn, we've moved to make notification, of course, to the community at large, pursue appropriate signage and the like. This could be a policy, if you were inclined. I don't know that it needs to be, but it certainly could be. School grounds and the school operations fall to the purview of the school committee during the day. So, this would be an extension of that. And the final thing, you know, as, as, was I, which I think is a rationale for it, you know, we do, we do work hard, as you know, to make sure our interior of our schools are safe and secure all the time. When you think about that, we don't know who those folks are. And in some cases, it's young kids. In some cases, it may not be, but there have been situations in which, as I suggested, there's been some conflict and things have not gone well. So, it seems like an appropriate direction to pursue. So, I'll pause there. Very happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Mr. Samaha?
Well, first of all, I think this, I think this policy makes sense, whether we, as a committee, decide it's good, it should be like a formal policy or not. I think it makes sense. To clarify, this is about during school hours, right? So, it's, we're clearly not saying twenty-four hours, you know, this playground is is off limits. Just so everyone is is aware of this, this is only during school hours, you know, when school is in session. I would be curious if it would also be for, like, summer cares or stuff, something like that. I think that would need to be a consideration. My other question is, would, does mask have like a policy recommendation? I mean, mask. Has anybody ever called it mask? I just did.
People do. I don't know. You know, I did not check that. I'll be honest with you. But I'm not sure.
Mr. Turner?
See, I, when I think back to one of our first meetings of the year, talking about security audits and and security of buildings, I think there's a clear connection to this. And I think there's all strong logic to doing something like this. In part because establishing the right sort of expectations with signage out front should reduce some time and effort for principals and other building leaders to be focused more on the kids inside the building and less on police, policing, not policing, but managing the external grounds. So, I think it falls in line with that. And I, we had the security audit. Was there a discussion in that discussion, in that review about external grounds?
No, not specifically.
It was more focused on the building themselves. And then, the only downside to this is we have school resource officers in certain buildings, but not in others. And some of the buildings, the grounds are not very visible in certain corners from the building. So, people, people wouldn't necessarily know if someone was there. Do we envision that we would have to ask the police department to provide occasional extra help? To, to, I know they are very good partners, but.
Yeah. I mean, they, and even at the elementary level, with what really effectively, or essentially, rather, is a shared resource across the buildings, they are very responsive. And as is the case now, you know, they're, and even if one's out, if one's out sick or on a different assignment, the backup coverage is is really excellent. Police are a great partner, so.
That makes sense. And then the last one, to follow on to what Mr. Samaha was talking about. To be precise and be practical with people, to give people good information, bell-to-bell, first bus, last bus, first bus to the end of cares. I mean, morning cares doesn't typically use the outside, but afternoon cares does. But there's also, with that point in time, we get to conflicts with soccer and other things like that. So, I don't think we can say afternoon cares. I don't, I don't think that would be supported by the town and by the use of our space, the spaces. But there's a little bit of grayness when we just say school day.
Yeah. We, we certainly have, we would have some work to do in terms of making sure we have aligned expectations for the time period that we're talking about across the board, taking into account cares. I think that that can be worked around very much so. It's not like we, you know, the care supervision staff is increasing, or the number of care staff whether we have is increased. A lot of that programming inevitably, not in the summer, is happening inside schools. It's not usually, it's not a lot outside. So, I think that that could be managed. So, I think we could come up with a, a clear approach that would be consistent across the board. I haven't gone there yet with that conversation with with the principals, waiting to have this conversation first.
Okay. So, the short answer is I'm supportive. All details.
Mr. Golden?
I, having walked around the grounds of the north last week when it was flooding, I agree that having a strange man walk around the ground is not ideal. So, just getting a sense of how the flooding was going there. But, but I do think, kind of to the points previously made, that, that kind of making sure that in this process of creating these signs, that they don't come, come out of nowhere and the whole neighborhood goes, well, I didn't know that's where the school's boundary was. Not to mention putting it in the middle of a field, because at the north, there's, there's a line that's just in the middle of a field. How do you, is that, you, you cross that line? Is it painted like a line? I think we just need a little bit more detail for it as to how we implement it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's an important idea, especially as we talk about better securing a new building at that site. But I do think that getting some preliminary sense of how, why do folks walk on the grounds? Do they walk on their dog? Probably, right? But are there other reasons why people walk the school grounds during the school day? And just how practically, more than a sign, can you actually enforce it? I do think that, as you were saying, Mr. Superintendent, that, that like, the police responsiveness is key. It's more that the school then has grounds, for lack of a better word, to call the police and say, hey, someone is intruding, more than necessarily having a citadel of cameras pointed in every direction. Although, that's something we could consider at a future date. But, so, yeah, I just, for practicality's purposes, I think just getting a sense of which schools see the most people walking around to begin with, and then like, what does that mean in practice? More than putting a sign down. Like, painting a line, that could be cool. Could be done for that.
Well, and if I may, I think when we spoke about this, to put this on the agenda, my thought was, start with a sense of the committee, right? If this is something the committee was like, oh, I don't think, then it doesn't go any further. But if I'm hearing correctly, everybody sort of thinks, this makes sense. We might need some more details. We might need to figure this out a little bit better. So, if that's, if that's the case, then, you know, we can talk, maybe it goes to the policy subcommittee, or, you know, we do some outreach, we get some more information, we formulate a plan, some proposal to this committee, that you guys can then sort of have more kind of tangible information at hand.
Yeah. If I might just bring up one more point, it's like to be the advocate for the other side of this, just so that it gets aired, is the idea that we want these buildings to be community spaces. And like, in the visioning for the new school, the idea is that it's a space where you're going to have the involvement of the community during the educational program to some degree. So, I just also want to make sure that we're not, we're being true to that as part of our broader mission, while also placing security and safety of the children as the paramount priority.
Sure. Mr. Exo?
I'm kind of uncomfortable with this. And I may acquiesce to it, but I didn't have a good feeling about this, this proposal. And some of it is just kind of, you know, knowing what it's like to, you know, have like young kids who just want to get out of the house and take them someplace nearby where, within maybe walking distance, and just have a little bit of, you know, outside time, a little playground that they can use. You know, not everyone can get to one of our public recreation spaces. Maybe it's just not so good to go to a park or to get to Yentile. And the local, the local school, which, again, we try to think of these as like community partners. And, you know, people with young kids kind of like think about like, oh, you know, we're going to go here eventually. And you're kind of, you're creating some of those feelings about the school system at that level. Now, that's one story, but there are obviously others. And I think, Dr. Brand, that you were saying in your memo, there have been some situations where there were, you know, people who, you know, we all like to think that people will behave properly and that if the school, if this, you know, if, if the kids in the school are outside using the property or the playground or the grounds, that that's not an appropriate time to be there or be near them, that that's a time to do something different. And so, it may, perhaps this falls into a, this is why we can't have nice things. Because some people just kind of don't, don't give the proper courtesy that, that maybe they should when, when using school property. But I, I do kind of think it's a, it's a bit of an unfortunate, bit of an unfortunate situation. And I think that something is definitely lost. And I would want to, I don't know, I would want to have some confidence that what we're gaining is, is worth, is worth it. And on the, you know, strictly on the safety grounds, I think you have to look at it in more than one way. Because, I mean, when we talk about sometimes like school building safety, we're talking often about like horrible emergency situations and, you know, actual like kind of lockdown and like penetration area. And there's no way to secure an outside area like that. We can have a policy that says you're not supposed to be on school grounds during school hours. And to some extent, you can enforce it. We can have, you know, the, the police can walk a beat, so to speak, and come by it every now and then. But you could never truly secure an outside area like that. So, it's not really the same kind of security issue that we're looking at when we're talking about inside the buildings. So, I don't know. I just want to, if, if we did this, I really would want to just feel that, that the, what we're gaining in terms of, you know, safety and security and avoiding inappropriate behavior around our kids during the school day is worth that just little kind of coarsening of the community environment and the public spaces in, in the town and with our community.
Good point. Dr. McCollough?
Yeah, thanks. I guess I'm the last one now. I, I kind of felt a little bit the same way that Mr. Ragsdale was feeling about this. I think a little bit more geared towards the elementary school, like the, the whole vision of like the playgrounds. And they're not used constantly during the day. But I, I know from my own experience, you know, when my kids were younger, you know, bring them to the playground in the morning, there was no kids there, and it's closer to home than going to any of the town parks. Or you can, some people are walking distance to, let's say, Shawshank Playground, which is, my kids say, the, the best one in the district, you know. You know, I, I do think, though, there is something to be said about maybe the high school grounds, right? Especially if there's active gym classes going on, people on the track there, and people that maybe are being a bit disrespectful and not being, if they're asked to leave because, hey, we need to use the track, not doing it. So, I think a balance needs to be struck there, you know, having it be absolutist, whether it's like one oh one to be on there. I do agree a bit with Mr. Ragsdale that it could, you know, implicitly put up like a wall with the community a little bit, too. Take it to an extreme, one of my, you know, coworkers lives in Southern California. All the stores are chain link fences around the campuses to shut them down. And, you know, I tell him like, yeah, we don't have that here. He's like, whoa, that's crazy. I don't even know, know that existed. I'm like, yeah, it's kind of nice, actually, that we don't have to do that, you know.
Well, I certainly, thank you for the feedback and respecting all of the thoughts and positions. I suggest maybe, I, I can, I'd be certainly willing to go back to talk more with our school principals about this, put together a few more details as part of a, I guess, a proposal, if you will, and what that might look like. And then, happy to bring it back if, if you'd like, you know, for future discussion. I don't think there's any, you know, we're going into the winter months. I don't think there's a, like I suggested, any immediate urgency. The thought to broach it now is to try and think ahead for the spring.
Sure.
And give us time to get there, but.
Sorry, one.
Nick. And then Sue.
I was wondering, Dr. Brand, if you wouldn't mind sharing a little more color from the police chief's thoughts with regard to this suggestion?
Yeah. Well, you mean myself, or?
Well, if you could relay some of the thoughts that led that to be included in this.
I know that, you know, I, if I, if I can just not take a pass, pass on that. But I, I think it would be important to have some of their voices presented, which I have talked to them. But I think it would be important to maybe free your ear directly from them, if not, you know, in, in person, but in, in a written memo or something of that sort, so.
Cool. Hearing some really interesting and good perspectives on this, the, what I heard from one of the principals in the conversation was, we have recess, a teacher goes out, one teacher, twenty students, or, or two teachers, twenty students, and there is an adult there with, either by themselves or with a child in the playground space, and I have to watch the space differently. And so, they're interacting with the recess, and they're not able to pay attention to the students the same way they would elsewise. And so, that's part of that level of concern. And so, perhaps there's a medium ground of, it's not school hours, it's actually less than. We don't do recess first period, the first hour. Sometimes we do it the last, but maybe we, we shorten it down to ten to two. Or something is a narrow window. And so, if you want to go in the, and if you post it that way, you can then plan with your smaller children, okay, I want, I'm going to go to the school, I know I need to get there before ten, or leave there, you know, whatever way we would do that. It could be a way to, to balance it. And it's not, obviously, having a fence around is not what we want to do, but it could, it could provide a little bit easier space for the teachers and the staff to manage and feel comfortable, while also maintaining some of the community balance. And that's just a rough idea, but might be a way to, to thread the needle of, of the most access we can give with the most appropriate level of, of a slightly safer, more comfortable space for our students.
Yeah. I mean, I think the safety and security of the people in our buildings is one of, if not the, you know, main concerns that we, as this committee, have, right? And so, not to suggest that we lock down the buildings and grounds from your point, bell-to-bell, whatever it is. I think, yeah, we can think about this a little bit more, more thoroughly and, and come up with a, an actual plan. But to, to Dr. Brand's point, this was more intended to be a, just kind of start the thought process around it. So, yeah, we can gather some more information and come back with a.
And quickly, if I can speak to the scenario that Mr. Turner describes. I certainly don't like the idea that a class that's out at recess and the teacher has no authority to tell someone that they can't be there in the playground with the class, because it is just an open space that anyone has access to at any time they want. I certainly would want teachers to have the ability to say, and so, maybe we would need a policy at minimum for this, to say just like, you can't be here while the class is, while the students are using, are using the playground or using the outdoor space or the field. And then have, have an actual policy backing, backing them up on that.
And I, I don't, I don't want to litigate this now, but when I was thinking about it, my thought was, well, maybe we just do it posted recess times, but then, you know, gym class goes out because it's super nice out, and that's outside of what the normal hours are. And then, there's all these, so certainly would be reconsidered and, and more thoroughly planned out. But thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And so, that concludes the superintendent's report, bringing us to subcommittee reports.
Yes, to the pledge.
You know.
Just back to front here.
Thank you, David. Mr. Turner, correspondence?
Not this evening.
Okay. Future school committee dates and other notable items. December twenty-third through January first of twenty-twenty-five is the winter break. January fourteenth, the Wildwood School Building Committee is meeting at six, six-thirty PM, excuse me, as a hybrid meeting. January fifteenth is the next regular school committee, committee meeting at seven PM here in this room. January twenty-second, the next, next regular school committee meeting at seven PM here. And that will be our next budget presentation. January twenty-third through January twenty-fifth, the Wilmington Middle School Drama Club will be presenting their show.
Descendants.
Musical.
Musical.
They're all musicals.
Most. And specific times, I believe, are on the district website. Definitely on the middle school's website. And January twenty-ninth, the Wildwood School Building Committee will be meeting again at six-thirty. And, Mr. Turner?
As our middle school friends shared with us, on January ninth, the eighth through twelfth grade chorus will be in the Wilmington High School auditorium for a presentation that evening.
And I also have here that on January twenty-fifth, the Wilmington Middle School Robotics Team will be competing. So, some exciting things to look forward to. I want to thank Dan Miller, the Special Education Team Chair, for lending me this incredible sweater that I brought and I didn't wear, but this festive Dr. Brand holiday sweater, which he wanted to gift to you in the hopes that your family would get some enjoyment out of that. So, you get a, you get a parting gift. But in all seriousness, I do want to just take a very brief moment to thank you, your leadership team, the building leaders, students, teachers, everybody involved and engaged in the Wilmington Public Schools for everything they've done up to this point, and, and wish everyone.
for everything they've done up to this point and, and wish everyone a happy and, and safe holiday break, not just a break from tonight, break for next week, thank you. And so with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Golden, second, by Mr. Exel, all those in favor? Unanimous. Good evening and thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.